I would like to call this meeting to order. It's January fourteenth, oh, it's January two thousand fourteen. Before we start, I want to welcome our new members, Annie Harla, Rosie Lefler Kemp, and our old friend, Harry Walty. We have two student, new student representatives. For me, we have Paul Manning, welcome Paul, and Kobe Trumbull from Denfeld. Kobe, are you out here? Or Kobe's here? Oh, come on up. You're, you're-
You're the next contestant.
You're the next contestant. Um. Go, go welcome him, yes. Um, we had two excellent student reps, Caitlin Persh and Eric Tebald, and we're looking forward to working. All of us will meet Kobe and Paul after a while. And we want to remind you two that you're part of the board. We'd like your input, especially the student view of whatever we're doing. You give us an aspect of the student life that we may not be aware of, and we appreciate it. Anytime you want to hit the button and make a comment, you can. All right? And if you ever have any questions, just ask Harry. He'll be glad to help you. Um, we're looking forward to two thousand fourteen. There are a lot of good things going on in our district. It's a, it's a new frontier for us, and I'm hoping that as a board, we can meet the needs of the students. We went down to the Minnesota School Board Association Convention last week, and all of us went, and we had lunch together, and we shared a lot of our ideas. We have a lot of strengths to offer, and we can, we can work with each other on solving our problems. I'm also very happy to have Bill Grandseth as our superintendent. I think he's a phenomenal superintendent, and we're lucky to have him. And with that, would Judy Sligapunkle do the roll?
Okay. You've got to help me here. There we go, and just hit that.
Okay. Thanks, Chairman Ernike. Um, let's see. Member Harla.
Here.
Member Johnston.
Yes.
Member Lefler Kemp.
Here.
Chairman Ernike.
Here.
And I am here, and Member Walty.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Grandseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Crawford. Deputy Clerk Hanson.
Here.
Secretary Tebow, except, but Sue Tell Rico's subbing. And then we have student representatives, and I have to just make sure, I'm not sure if I have your names. I know I have Student Representative Manning is here.
And Trumbull.
And Trumbull? Assistant Superintendent, okay. And you're both here. Welcome, the both of you. Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Members Sligapunkle. I ask the audience to all please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Now we go on to the approval of the minutes.
Of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda. I circled one ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Member Walty. Any comments? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven, nothing. We'll go on to reading of the minutes. The reading of approval of the minutes of December seventeenth, two thousand thirteen. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Our second.
Is there a second? Moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Member Sligapunkle. Any comments? All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes seven, nothing. And are we done with all the minutes? I thought we had another meeting.
Page seven.
Page seven.
Yeah.
Moving on here.
The organizational meeting.
There we go. Yep. The organizational meeting was held on Monday, January sixth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Member Sligapunkle, seconded by Member Harla. Any comments? Member Walty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah. The annual meeting is referred to in the adjournment with a few comments as the annual meeting, the organizational meeting that we just had. Could you explain your comments? Because I couldn't quite recall what you were, what these, this means. The Chairman Ernike stated the administration reviewed the agenda for the annual meeting to confirm necessity of the items. What's the annual meeting?
We're in the annual meeting, or the organizational meeting is the annual meeting, and then we have our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All in favor of approving the minutes of January sixth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. Okay. At this point, one of my favorite point parts is we go to our school and community recognition. We have a lot of people who work in the district, and we like to try to recognize outstanding accomplishments as much as we can. If the board and the student representatives will join us up front, Member, Mr. Crawford is going to read the award.
How do you read them out?
Members, members of the board, this month, I'm pleased to present ISD seven oh nine Transportation Manager Ken Run for recognition. The Minnesota Association of Pupil Transportation has selected Ken as the two thousand thirteen MAPT Administrator of the Year. He received the honor at the Minnesota School Bus Safety Expo held in St. Paul last Friday. MAPT is a nonprofit association of school transportation professionals and industry leaders who promote safe and efficient student transportation. The award recognizes Ken's leadership and excellence in the area of student transportation. In the nomination materials, Ken is described as knowledgeable, motivated, quality-oriented, committed, and willing to do whatever it takes to ensure we offer a transportation service that is safe, effective, and efficient as possible. Ken has worked in student transportation for over thirty years, nearly twenty-five of them as manager. He serves as Regent for Director for MAPT and is a former secretary and president of MAPT. Congratulations, Ken.
While we're settling down, I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Williams for many, many, many years, and Duluth is a unique city. It's very long, it's very hilly, we have all sorts of weather problems, and we have schools strewn from one end to the other, and Mr. Williams just does an outstanding job taking care of the transportation needs of our kids. Congratulations. We now move on to the audience portion of our meeting. And we, again, I won't make a long speech, but we ask the members to restrict their comments to three minutes and stay on topic, and no personal insults will be, will be allowed. We want a nice, positive meeting here. Our first speaker, our first two speakers are Sue Ernest and Judith McKeever. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sue Ernest, and I'm chairperson of the Ask Me Local Sixty-Six Paraprofessional Bargaining Unit, and I work at Denfeld High School. In October of last year, the school district approached our union with a memorandum of understanding regarding holidays and in-service days for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. After much discussion, our bargaining unit chose to vote on that memorandum of understanding and incorporate it into our collective bargaining agreement as a good-faith gesture to the district and the school board. After doing that, we felt it was a favor for the school board. We are informed that the district had decided to decrease the amount of training that would be provided to pairs for this school year. This issue has sparked a lot of discussion amongst the members of the parabargaining unit, and as many of you heard, we are concerned with how it transpired. The paraprofessionals that work with ISD seven oh nine care about children we work with. We care about the health and effectiveness of the district, and we care about our community. The work we do every day is hard. We work with children who have medical issues, mental health issues, children who can and often do get physically violent with us, children with language barriers, children with learning barriers, and children who need our time and attention to ensure that they don't fall through the cracks. This type of work requires an ongoing training, learning and training. This is why many pairs were so disappointed that the district had chosen to do non-paraprofessional training this year. I have with me today several union members who are disappointed with the district's decision to overlook the needs of the pairs when planning this year's schedule, calendar. We have circulated a petition asking the district to consider these needs in the future and at least offer the minimum amount of training required in our collective bargaining agreement for this school year. The petition reads, "We, the undersigned, do not agree with the reduction in training for the Ask Me Paraprofessionals and the Food Service Bargaining Units." Paraprofessionals are always the ones that are the most, are often the ones that have the most contact with students that are in special education. We are familiar with their needs and what they're getting out of the classes that they attend. We ask that the district provide the training days previously offered to our bargaining units. At the very least, the district should provide the minimum number required under collective bargaining agreement. Furthermore, we ask that the calendar, that when the calendar is planned out for the next school year, that more thought is put into staff development for all. In October, the Paraprofessional Bargaining Unit voted to modify the holiday schedule as a good-faith effort to accommodate the school district. This change in training schedule is troublesome to our bargaining unit, given that good-faith effort. Approximately one hundred and sixty pairs and others have, have signed this petition, and I have copies for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mitch Wiss.
Good evening, Superintendent Grandseth and members of the board. My name is Mitch Wiss, and I apologize in advance for some redundancy on this, but we wrote our thing separately. As several of you know, I've served the Duluth Public Schools in a variety of positions over the past many years, and at present, I'm a paraprofessional at Denfeld High School. I work with a group of extremely dedicated and caring individuals, and none of them will hesitate to go above and beyond the call of duty on any student's behalf. As paraprofessionals, we serve our district's students in many ways and in different settings. We work with a variety of students, from those struggling with learning disabilities to those with extreme behavior issues and those with severe mental and physical challenges. Our duties run the gamut, from changing diapers, dealing with social issues, unlocking the abilities of extremely intelligent autistic students. Our jobs can be tough and sometimes even dangerous. There are many days when some of us are verbally and occasionally even physically assaulted, and we're told by the school district that these issues are just part of the job and to expect it. Sadly, we're also told that there is no legal recourse for these assaults. Our jobs can also be very rewarding. Due to large class sizes, in many instances, we're the ones who provide the individual attention to students that teachers cannot. We encourage those students who struggle and celebrate with those students when they reach their goals as they progress through the system. Gone are the days when just anyone can be a paraprofessional. Now, college-level classwork is required, or a test must be passed in order to qualify. We must, we must know about bloodborne pathogens, legal issues associated with student individual education plans, and must be certified as personal care assistants. Yet those who work most closely with students sadly are among the least paid. In large systems such as the school districts, employee morale is extremely important. Aside from the constant reductions in force in our numbers, this year, there's been a persistent talk of eliminating health benefits for most of our group. As employees, most of whom work less than forty hours per week, many would not have enough hours to qualify for benefits. Additional stress is caused on snow days or cold days when we have to choose to be paid out of our sick leave or take those days without pay. And there have been about five of those so far this year. We were debating if it was five or six. We've had so many, we're kind of lost there. On staff development days, past practice had paraprofessionals included with teachers or were provided with other training that pertained to what we were doing in the classrooms. Shortly before winter break, the district asked for a memorandum of understanding so the school calendar could be changed. In a spirit of cooperation, the paraprofessionals voted and agreed with the wishes of the district. Imagine everyone surprised when on returning from winter break, we learned that a decision was made to take two days' pay from our group. Those days were the end of the semester, last Friday, January seventeenth, and today, January twenty-first, is Staff Development Day. We have been included in activities on those days in the past. What a holiday gift, two more days without pay, just as the bills are coming in. District changes in the way staff development is delivered should not be at the expense of paraprofessionals. It's my hope that in the future, a definite calendar of working days be established for paraprofessionals. On those days when teachers are in staff development, we should be included, if relevant to our work or training specific to our duties be provided. After all, no one works closer to the students. Paraprofessionals do not make a lot of money, and most are not working in schools or being paid during the summer. For many, stretching minimal resources is important. The last-minute decision to remove two days of pay was at the very least insensitive, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wiss.
Thank you.
Very much. Our next speaker is Peg Olman.
Hi. As Mitch said, we didn't talk to each other ahead of time, and we will be saying a lot of the same things because it is important that you hear it, and so I'm glad that you're hearing it from more than one of us. I want to thank you all for all you do for the schools, and I'm realizing that it is very hard for you to balance the budget. We all understand that. My biggest point that I would like to make is that I would really want you not to consider balancing the budget on the backs of your least-paid workers, and we are in that group, and we knew that when we signed on, that it wasn't a high-paying job, but we knew, we were expecting a certain salary, much like you would. You would not want to find out the month before that you were losing two days out of your paycheck. And I think that it wasn't right that it was done this way, and I think that you have somewhere, somehow, the ability to give us that money back, and I don't know how you can figure that out, but you're all good people, and I think that you would care about us. I would hope that you would. I would hope that you would want to take care of your workers with the people that work closely with the kids, that that's what we're all about. The school district is about caring for kids and working, we are there, like it's been said, right on the front lines with them every day, and we give our hearts and souls to them, and we'll bring in extra things if we think somebody needs pencils or whatever. And it's a time everybody's tightening their belts, but please, don't make those decisions on the backs of the poorest people. And I'm really glad that this segue is after Martin Luther King Day, because what did Martin Luther King, what was he all about? What were those marches all about yesterday? Poor people. I eat lunch with four other pairs, three of whom are struggling to make the ends meet because they don't have another one working in their household. And when you do that to them, you are making them have to decide where to get groceries, how to get groceries, they already go to Ruby's Pantry, so now what are they going to do? And how to pay bills. The heating costs are rising and rising, and it's just not right. Most of you, I'm assuming, have good salaries and know that you don't have to worry about how you're going to do this, but I've been in that position, and I thank God I'm not in that position, and I could, except by the grace of God, be there. But please, 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 think about all of us that need the money to pay a bill, and don't take it away from us, and don't let us know that two days ahead of time, or a month ahead of time. So, and I have worked for the district. I was a teacher years ago, and now I've been a paraprofessional for twenty-one years, and we have always, always been paid for that semester break day and the in-service day today, and I would have greatly benefited from the training. It's on science baskets. My teacher that I work with really wishes I was there today to learn that. It would have been good for me to be there. It would have been money well spent to have us all at that staff development. Besides, morally and ethically, it's right to pay us for days that when we looked at the calendar, we were going to get paid until we got an email last month. So I really want you to hear some emotion about that, so that you understand emotionally and morally, ethically, what you did when you took that money away from poor people. So, I might be over my three minutes, but please, thank you very much for listening and thinking about that.
Thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Olman. Our next speaker is Richard Paulson.
Good evening. The quote of Mr. Hanson in the Duluth News Tribune in an article on December eighteenth really bothered me. He states, "A transfer of four point nine million dollars from the general fund to pay debt wasn't made because of the tax vote, and that amount of money will be moved to the general fund balance." Can I assume the board must approve this transfer? If so, what happened to Think Kids? I would ask the board to consider using the majority of these funds for the students. It has been okay the past four years not to meet the district's ten percent of fund Why would the district make up over fifty percent of their shortage in fund balances for the general fund and leave the students out? Behooves me, I don't understand. The second item I'd like to talk about would be, I would like to ask the new board to please require a state audit for fiscal fourteen. Your policy number thirty-two fifteen states that the school board will arrange with a state of Minnesota auditor to conduct the financial audit of the school district every five years. I'm sorry to tell everyone, including the board, the last state audit was in nineteen ninety-four. So a little, so a state audit is way, way overdue. This district cannot ask for a proposal for an audit. It has to request an audit. Period. Under any set of circumstances, a request for a state audit of a, our school district, a city of the first class, in twenty years, is not asking too much, I don't believe. And it should be honored by the state auditor. My review of the fiscal year thirteen audit really leaves a lot of questions for me, and I'm going to share those with the board in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Appreciate that. Our last speaker is Lauren Martel. Welcome, Mr. Martel.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening. The reaction I received from my last speech made me wonder. I was in the middle of the holiday season, getting through the first holiday season after losing the person you've spent the previous thirty holiday seasons with, longer than one of the board members here has even been alive. His heartache beyond description. I wondered if the anger I felt sometimes towards the cosmos has seeped out inappropriately in this venue, so when I got home, I called a few people I knew had been watching and asked them if I had crossed them line. Every one of them said, "No, that's ridiculous." There seems to be some dispute about what constitutes free speech, so a while back, I applied for assistance to the Minnesota chapter of the ACLU. The ACLU's Board of Directors has agreed to sponsor my defense of free speech in this room. I don't know how you folks feel, but I wouldn't mind having a jury of my peers take a close look at what's been going on. I want to point out here that there's more than one way to act uncivil. Smirking, rolling your eyes, turning off the microphone, brusquely dismissing differing points of view are all uncivil acts and undemocratic. Many people in this town feel only one board member has been representing their point of view for the past two years. The only other way they have to express their version of the truth is from this podium. I understand that viewpoint is not shared by ninety-five percent of the people in this insulated hall of power. I understand that expressing that point of view is going to rain a bit from time to time on your self-congratulatory agenda, but in my opinion, that is the very essence of free speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martel. Ms. Harla, there are no other people signed up to speak. That concludes our audience. Reading and Communications is our next item. There are none. We turn to the superintendent for his report.
Good evening, and welcome to our, our new student representatives, Student Rep Manning and Student Rep Trumbull, and also to the new board members. I will say that I enjoyed our time at the Minnesota School Board Association Conference, and I'm looking forward to our continued work together. One of the exciting things that's been happening, last night, I got to spend some time with the East High School Robotics Team, the Daredevils, who were visited by Senator Al Franken, who is in town for another event, and had called to ask us if he could spend time with the robotics team and understand more about the first robotics program and the experience that they have. And I was very encouraged with our conversation about career and technical education and his work at the federal level on education. So I thank him for coming to town and for spending some time with us, and I also wanted to talk a little bit about what a lot of people are calling Think Kids Two. It's this year's round of Think Kids meetings. One of the things we learned last year by listening to what people had to say about Think Kids is that they wanted that conversation to continue, and so we are doing that this year and changing the structure a little bit, keeping other parts the same. We're going to start off by talking about the last year, what's gone well, what hasn't gone well, and then moving into two separate discussions. The first section will be on the budget for two thousand fourteen fifteen. Having graciously passed both levels of the levy, there's been a lot of conversation that people wanted to know exactly how that money was going to be spent, what it was going to go for. All along, we've said that we're using it to lower class sizes, to help to close the achievement gap, and to enrich and expand our curriculum, and we will be sharing that information and gathering input during the Think Kids sessions. We'll also be talking about class size and the different kinds of things that can affect class size. Enrollment in a school can also have an effect depending on how many kids are in each school. So we'll be looking at school enrollments in our elementary schools across the district and talking about some of our imbalances that we have in the district and how we might be able to address some of those and help lower class size as we do it. So all of those dates for the Think Kids meetings are listed on our website, which is www.isd709.org, and we'll also be taking information electronically. If you can't make a meeting, please feel free to go to the survey, which will be live on the web on January twenty-seventh, or give us a call or send us a letter, and give us your feedback on these topics, and we hope to see you there at, at a meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We now turn to a report of our standing committees. We begin with our Education Committee. Ms. Harla, would you give the- We begin with our Education Committee. Ms. Harlow, would you give the education report, please?
I have to remember to do that. All right, I'll start with the informational items. First, we received from Unity and ALC a presentation from Adrian Norman and teachers Joe Shingin and Phil Thoyne, is it Thoyne? Correct. Who presented a snapshot of the technology being utilized by students and staff at Unity and ALC and shared an update on the status and progress of their blended program. I want to just comment a little about on the passion that these teachers had at this meeting. They, the staff has really come together in this new area learning center, and we can be really proud of what's happening. They, you can see in the attachments, the enrollment at the school is stronger, and students are really invested in their education and finding ways to find their spark. And so I'm just really excited to see what's happening and to hear what's happening at the area learning center. Would encourage any of the board members to connect, and if you weren't able to make the meeting, to learn a little bit more about it. It was a great, a great presentation. So it's recommended that this, that the Duluth School Board receive this item as informational. And then we received a presentation from the Random Drug Testing Committee update. So there was a Random Drug Testing Committee that comprised of district and building administrators, a school board member, activity directors, school social workers and nurses, and a police liaison officer. They've been meeting since last spring with the, with the charge of exploring the possibility of implementing a random drug test of Duluth Public Schools student athletes. And committee members Tom Pearson, Sean Road, Ron Lake, and Tim Sworfsky presented information on their findings and plans moving forward, but also Member Monica Keyes serves on that board as well, too, so I want to make sure that that's noted. But it was just received as informational, something that we received. One of the main pre-points was that we learned a lot about what they're doing in Superior High School, but the board at this time is just receiving it as informational.
Action items.
All right, so action items. So there was a presentation of items requiring approval. There is a new computer science principles and course proposals. Okay, so they did, we had a few different presentations on some new curriculum that we had with regard to new computer science principles and course proposals. Really, it was more in the area of, of getting the student, having their correct names to go along with the curriculum. So that was for that. So it was recommended that the Duluth School Board and accept and approve the addition of that, the above course that we mentioned. And then also, it's recommended the middle and high school course offerings. He presented the middle and high school course offerings for 2014. He, the coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, shared information on, recommended course offerings for the school year. And this was a piece where they talked a little bit about eliminating two family and consumer science classes and replacing it instead with, a lot of the students are choosing to take things like culinary classes versus the traditional family and consumer science classes. And though the pieces that are covered in those, those high school fax classes are covered in junior high family and consumer science classes. So the information is still being taught to our students in summer required classes, but they have the high school opportunities, the high school opportunities. They'll have other electives they can take instead. So it would be recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the recommended middle and high school course offerings for the 2014-2015 school year. And then we also received, there's, do we need to move?
Just a grant application.
Okay, great. So grant applications, there's a resolution E. 1143157, acceptance of grant awards for Duluth Public Schools. And we received a grant from the Lloyd K. Johnson Foundation, and this was to support AmeriCorps members within the schools, to support the cash match for, to support AmeriCorps members supporting students in our schools. So it's recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the resolution of E. 1143157, acceptance of grant of awards to the Duluth Public Schools.
Field trips?
Do I need to get a second on that?
Yeah, we need a second on the resolution.
Okay, I need a second on.
I'm sorry, we went right to the resolution. We went right to the resolution. I was talking to the superintendent. It's been moved by Member Harlow to accept resolution E. 1143157, and was seconded by Member Lofler Cott. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor of accepting the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oh, there is a, Member Waltie.
Yes, this, I will apologize to the board. When we had our first committee meetings of the year, I was, I was in Florida. And I apologize for missing the meetings, and I apologize for being in Florida. But I do have one question because I missed the meetings, and I'll have a number of questions, so bear with me through the Education Committee report. I took a look at the Lloyd K. Johnson Foundation, and I, I guess I must have skimmed it because I'm not sure what that $10,000 grant is for. Could someone just tell me a little bit about it?
Is that Assistant Superintendent Crawford?
It's to support the AmeriCorps workers that we have at the, at all of our middle and high school, as well as the reading and math corps in our elementary schools.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Harlow.
There was a.
Oh, yes, I thought. If there are no other questions, let's vote on the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Pass the seven, nothing. We've gone through the DuPont requests.
No.
Okay, now you want to, there we go. CDE.
Great, so.
Okay, great. So we had a few extended field trip requests. Fifth grade students from Homecraft Elementary will be traveling to Wolfridge, and also fourth graders from Congan Park are going to be traveling to Wolfridge as well, too, with great experiences and kind of some hands-on learning for those students. And then fifth grade students from Myers Wilkins will have traveled to Deep Portage Environmental Learning Center in Hackensack, Minnesota from January. So it's recommended that the school board accept and approve the extended field trip requests. Then we also have a few diploma requests for the following students. Thompson John Valley, Sarah Catherine Denny, Justice Laney Lundquist, Jacob Robert Privet, and Alan Michael Weaver. It is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above requested diploma awards. And then there, we also have a certificate of attendance that will be awarded to the following East High School Foreign Exchange student in lieu of diploma dated December 20th, 2013, and that's for Heijron Christina Bay. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above certificate of attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow, Member Harlow. Is there a second? There's a second by Member Waltie. Any other discussion? Member Waltie.
Yes, can we pull some things for discussion at this point?
Certainly.
All right. I would like to, I just have fairly simple questions on a number of these topics. Informational presentation, I have a question about the Unity ALC presentation. 1A2, the Random Drug Testing Committee update. And I have a question, I'd like to withhold the extended field trip requests as well.
Okay. Members, Slade Pankel.
Thank you. I just, I have a question about, let's see, it's 2A2, the recommended middle and high school course offerings. So I have some questions about that.
Thank you. Member Waltie.
Thank you very much.
Is green go and red stop? I guess it looks like stop is go, or stop is red. I had a couple of questions about Unity ALC. I was pretty familiar with this back when it was housed in Barnes-Aim, and as it moved up to the, the H-O-C-H, it's old central. And I'm just wondering, I saw how many students it looks like come into the program. It looked like it was between 30 and 56 or 60 or so every month. Could somebody tell me where ALC is, Unity ALC is housed now, and tell me just, give me a quick picture of how the program runs now and the kind of numbers of students you expect in future years? Are we plateaued or not? Superintendent?
Well, I believe there is backup data on this that gives you some numbers of students that are in the program. This is a very new program. Last year, we dissolved the existing Unity program, and this year started a new blended online program, which Assistant Superintendent Crawford has done a wonderful job of, of leading, and also Kevin Abram, Abrahamsen has been involved as well. This year, they are working to certify the program so that Duluth Public Schools can have its own brand, if you will, of online education that other students in other districts across the state could enroll in Duluth Public Schools online. So we are hoping that this is a program that will continue to expand and that we will work into each of our high schools, both Denfeld and East, and possibly down the road, look at ways of teaching blended online courses as an alternative for all of our students who, who chose to do that.
Member Waltie. Yes, to follow up on that, I do recall a discussion on the online students. At present, are Denfeld students and East students studying their, are they taking these courses at those locations? Are they doing it from home? Are they doing it from other locations?
I'm sorry, I forgot to answer that question. It's here in this building on the first floor.
One last question. There is a Venn diagram that talks about dual and non-dual students, and I'm afraid that's a little bit of the nomenclature, the verbiage I'm not familiar with. Could you help me out with that?
Sure. Dualy, duly, no, I can't say it. Duly enrolled students may be taking some of their courses here through the Unity ALC program, and some of their courses at their home high school of either Denfeld or East or Hermantown or Proctor, wherever they might be coming to us from. So they're half and half.
Student Representative Men.
Yes, I'd just like to ask what the expected cost and what the current cost is of this program.
Mr. Gronseth, Member Gronseth.
I do have that information, but I don't have it in front of me, so I could bring it to a future meeting.
Okay. Member Waltie, one more question. You mentioned that this might be available to students throughout the state if we came up with a brand that was suitably attractive. Would this mean that the students from other parts of the state would pay to, that somehow from their home districts, we would, we would get the same kind of income we might from a student that had transferred into our district on a temporary basis, or what do we call it? Oh, we, no, when they.
Yeah, open and roll.
Open and roll, yes.
Yes.
A same amount as if they were actually housed in our classrooms?
And I'm going to hand you off to Assistant Superintendent Crawford, who has been a key player in all of this.
I just turned myself off. Yes, we are in the process of being accredited by the Minnesota Department of Education, and there's a fairly prescriptive process in order for us to be eventually accredited. We, our plan is to have, to submit a plan in May, and then the state has 90 days to review it. If we have to tweak it, they give us the opportunity to do that. But once we're fully accredited, then we're able to start, you know, really our goal is to not only bring back some of the students that we've lost through homeschool, through, you know, charter schools, yeah, all the other alternative schools, but also to start inviting, if you will, students from other districts to participate in our online learning program.
Question. I'm a little confounded by these, and I know that Sue gave me an explanation. Do I press it once and leave it on, and then when you press it, it turns green and I can speak? Although it's orange, it's red right now.
It turns red when it's on. It turns, it's green when you're waiting.
That's a very confusing color. I'm, I'm used to the traffic lights. I'll try to keep that in mind. Okay, I'm sorry. Member Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple comments and questions. If I'm looking at the charts here right, we've got a significant increase in the ALC this year, which I think is good. And I think that's in order to comment that, that we've, that we seem to be getting these kids here and more enrollment for our school, and that's, that's good. So it seems to be quite significant, so I thank the staff on that. Also, I noticed the out-of-school suspension seems to be dropped a lot, which is, seemed to be a very significant drop, which I certainly think is good, but maybe Superintendent, maybe let's make a comment on that. Is that as good as it looks, or are we rating everything differently, or what do you think?
Stop doing that. Will you stop doing that?
I'm sorry. In our continuous improvement plan for the district, one of our goals is to reduce the use and disproportionality of out-of-school suspension. And so we have been working very hard as a district to address those issues. And I think that it would be better if we had perhaps a presentation at an Education Committee, because there is a committee that is working on this district wide, and I think that they would be able to provide you with more specifics about the programs and practices that are being put in place.
Great, I appreciate that. Just a comment, too. I think you were at one of the sessions on MSBA and talked about suspensions and expulsions, and which I thought was very interesting. Glad to see that we're also pursuing something, so thank you and look forward to that. One other quick comment, as you did mention homeschools, Assistant Superintendent Crawford. And just a, there's a little box here on homeschool. What does that mean underneath the pie charts? And didn't, I don't understand the reference to homeschools. It's on page five and six.
These are the schools that, that the students are, would be there, the school they would be attending if they were not at ALC. So their homeschool, that's the area that they live in.
Is that, what's that connection with ALC, or is there a connection between the homeschooling numbers and ALC numbers, or?
So there are 59 students who attend ALC. If they were not at ALC, they would be at Denfeld High School. Or 31 students at East High School attend ALC who live in the East Attendants area.
Okay, so, sorry for the confusion. Is that the same people that are?
Yeah. Let's, you know, do we have a question for the superintendent then? Or have we answered it? I don't, I don't know.
It's not, it's not real important. I'm a little confused still about, sorry.
The confusion comes in when it says homeschool. It should probably say attendance.
Attendants area.
School of attendance, or, yeah.
Okay, of the people that are in ALC.
Right.
Okay, okay, I got it. Thank you. Member Harlow.
I just wanted to make one more point, that the students that attend the school have come from 12 or 13 criteria areas that they, that they have to meet with us. There are a lot of students come from tougher backgrounds or are experiencing a lot of, of tougher life. So actually getting to school is a really hard thing. Students that may be teen parents or mental health issues, victims of sexual assault. And what I was really impressed to see the staff say that these students that are at school want to be at school. They, they could easily be dropping off, but they have to prove that they're able to attend the school. And so I think we need to commend the students that are really sticking around here. They may not come from families that are supporting, supporting them as much to be able to get to school. And so the staff at the schools work really hard to make sure that they're having, that they're engaged in their learning. I'm, I'm just really excited about, about that specific demographic being supported in our district, too.
Thank you. Members Slade Pankel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, and I thought of it when Member Johnston talked about the staff. And so we're up to 87. And so, we're up to 87 students attending and I'm curious how many staff, are they specialized? Is there more, I'm sure there's more one-on-one, but I'm curious how many staff and, and are there, is there, say, one for social studies, one staff member, one for math? I mean, just get an idea how many staff we have and, you know, as far as teacher, teaching staff, I think. Cause I've, I've heard things, just the difference from the high schools, because I think they have so many more students and I know that there's concern about that. So I'm curious how many staff members at ALC.
Mr. Crawford.
We have, yeah, social studies, English, science, math, and then two special education teachers. We just actually added a special ed teacher. And then we also have a teacher who not only provides some recovery, credit recovery interventions, but is also the lead staff member who is in constant communication with our Minnesota Department of Education as we roll out the online learning component. Oh, and we also have a full-time counselor.
Can I add one more thing? Oh, thank you. And Mr. Crawford, also, do the, the teachers have to teach, say, you know, you have three grades at the high school or you have different levels of math. Are they, they teaching all the different levels of math or is the social studies, or are they combining it? So they, I'm, I'm just curious how that works. Just pick one subject, I'm just curious.
Because it's a blended program, they can individualize the, the instructions, yeah. So they have all, you know, from, from remediation right up to algebra two or beyond if that's where their abilities are.
Superintendent Gronseth.
I just wanted to add to that, if you don't mind, that the staff that are working there are also working on creating the curriculum that will become our online program. So it, there is a portion of their day that is an investment on our side in creating a program that can become our own online programming. So they're actually writing the curriculum for that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Crawford.
I was reminded that it is a reduction of staff from last year.
Thank you for that.
I didn't mean to do that.
That concludes our unity. I guess not. Member Welty. This, this sounds like a, a wonderful program and much needed. Just a quick question. This, you said was a reduction in, 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 in staff, Mr. Crawford. Is, do these students now numbering 87, at least as of January, are they enjoying a somewhat richer student-to-teacher ratio than most of the students in the high schools? Or are they only seeing these many teachers occasionally throughout the week that they, they, they work on their academics?
It's a combination of those options. Some students, because it's a blended program, the part of the requirement is for the students to go home and actually do the work at home. I don't know if you're familiar with the flipped classroom where some new concepts are introduced via online learning and then they, they revisit those concepts in class. So it's, it's more of an individualized approach to learning than what you'll find in a regular or in a typical classroom situation.
Member, Member Welty, you pulled random drug testing?
Yes, I did. I had a chance to read through this. I have some thoughts. I'm sorry I wasn't a part of that discussion in, in committee. I'm not certain the way this is couched for, for my review. Is this waiting for school board action? Is it contemplated that this is going to go into effect? Because if, if it is to go into effect, I do have some questions that I would like to.
Before you ask the questions, like Superintendent Gronseth to respond, I think we can cut a lot of this out.
I, I hope that didn't come off.
Thank you, I, I, I'm okay. Superintendent Gronseth is going to give us an update.
This was a conversation and it was information for us to consider, to talk about and was really a way to start a conversation about the seriousness of chemical health issues, not only in our schools, but in our community. And I know that we work with a number of organizations and community groups that help us to address these issues. And we also know that mental health plays a role as well. Right now, there is no formal proposal, there's no formal program that the board is considering or taking any action on. But I do hope that we continue as a community to have this conversation of the importance of chemical health and how it's affecting us and how we as a community can best address it.
I was a member of that and we, we sat down basically with a member from the Superior District. We were asked to take a look at what Superior's doing and basically that's what we did. I think there was a, a reaction at this, again, Mr. Welty, you weren't there at the time and you, and there was this reaction, this was, this is a policy that we had enacted, I'd even heard. And it's not even that, it's, 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 we, we looked at a, a program that's not far from our district and, and that's all it's, that's about as far as we've gone in that. Student Representative Manning.
Just a question to Gronseth and like the administration. I appreciate you having a conversation about this and everything, but in the future, while you have this conversation, do you foresee any students or parents being involved in this?
Oops. Superintendent Gronseth.
Certainly. Any, any further, you know, if we got farther down the road in talking about this, we would fully vet it with students and staff and community. There'd be a lot of discussion and it would probably be a, at least a year-long discussion in the development and planning of that and make sure that all of the voices were involved.
Member Weston.
Yeah, just some, some observations and I will, I'll try to keep it short because we're, our meeting is getting a little long. But in, in my years in the district, 10 years as a teacher and a coach and 17 years in high schools and in middle schools as a principal and assistant principal, I've had a lot of contact with these issues relative to drug testing and drug use and all of that kind of stuff. And the one things that I think, things that I'll keep an eye on, and I think this, this part, been part of the discussion already, is I'm very concerned about cost. If you're really going to do this right, this is, this is probably going to be, it may be a very expensive endeavor we have. And also the effectiveness of this, you know, depending on how many staff you have and how this, how this is worded, there's nothing worse, I think, than having a policy that you really can't enforce. So, you know, effectiveness concerns are, are things that I'm thinking about. And also the legality of, of random searches. And boy, I've done my share of searches as, as an administrator of students that have had various issues relative to drugs or other things, so. But on the other, on the other hand, having a random drug testing, looking at this issue again is certainly, I think, worth our while. So, I mean, that's just some random observations I have.
I'd like to mention that Member Weston was also an attorney, so he knows the law, the law part of it. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A little still confused. What is the status of this? Is this moving forward? Are we still contemplating, are we talking more? Is it, was it just informational and we're not going to do anymore? Could you please explain more? I guess what, what's, what's happening with this?
Superintendent?
Well, just, just that it was informational. It was an update on something that we had been looking into and it's not an action right now. And as I said, there would be much more discussion with students, staff, community, board, if we were to move forward on this. So, there's not a plan to move forward on this right now. It was just informational.
Member Johnston.
Okay, so we're not going to have meetings with parents or students?
Not at this time unless, unless the board at some point directed me to continue to work on this.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a couple, a couple comments on it too. Yeah, I heard a lot of reaction, all but negative so far about that. I think probably all of us have. I've heard also personal comments from people at, in particular over the weekend about this. And I'm on a, the occupations I have, I'm on a random drug testing thing, always have been. It's, I mean, that certainly has its place. I am concerned though about implementation of that. And as, as we probably all knew down MSBA on Friday morning, we, we made the front page of the Minneapolis paper about this, I think on some of the probably wrong information, I hope. But yet, it seems to have raised a lot of concerns. The article said, whether or not it's true, I don't know, that the ACLU is ready to pounce on us if we implement this. It also indicated some other studies that said the effectiveness was not good. I didn't see that in our thing again, I'm not making a judgment on any of that, but it's certainly, there's going to be lots of issues there that were brought up, which concerns me and I, I would certainly recommend here that we certainly don't move forward with this at, at this point and certainly always, we have, we obviously have to talk about the, the drug issue and the problems. It's always a problem and not always a problem, unfortunately, it's a problem. Maybe more so now than it used to be back when I was a kid. But I'm not sure this is the best way to do it and I'd certainly like to look for the students and whatnot to give us feedback and if there's other ways to address this issue. You know, we can't not, we can't ignore issues like, like the drug issue, but I'm not sure this is a way to go, to do it.
Superintendent, do you need a comment on that?
Just that there, you know, there is a plethora of information and research out there and, you know, it's, we have to be careful whether we're looking at one side or the other side, that we are being objective, looking at all of the information that, that is always presented on, on any given topic in this one as well.
Member Harla.
Well, realizing that this is just a piece of the pie and how we would respond, I'd, I'd be very interested to see what, if we looked at Superior and what they're doing, what are other districts in our region doing to respond comprehensively through positive community norms? I know that Deer River High School has a very comprehensive, they have a grant from the, from Department of Human Services on, on responding to drug issues. So I, I would hope that this doesn't drop just because of this one piece, but how can we as a board have a conversation about how we address drug issues in schools? And I also want to make sure that when we do make a policy, that it's nothing that would single out or draw different populations. And I'd also like to see some data behind, behind that. So, yeah, I'd just like to see more of a comprehensive report, approach and more of a conversation and a lot more research done by neighborhood, I'm sorry, by neighboring districts and communities in our state.
Thank you. Student Member Manning. Oops, let me do that again. Here we go.
Okay. This, this drug testing committee, I'm just wondering if it's open to the public and if we can attend meetings of this to see what's happening? If so, when and where do these happen?
Unless this, unless the board moves forward on this, there, there won't be any action. If, if the board as a group said, let's, let's continue this and then we would have to set parameters and I, I think it'd be wise to include all members of the community. Member Salida Ponco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a quick comment on, if you read the first, the goal, this is, I think the, the last statement says, this program also provides strong rationale for students to just say no. And I know that there's peer pressure out there. Sometimes kids, you know, in the moment have a tendency to, you know, maybe go along with friends and, and the thing I, I do like about this, eventually, it does give a reason for kids to say, you know, I, I just, I don't want to drink tonight or, you know, whatever. So, I like the idea, I mean, this is not like we're going to, I, I'm surprised to hear that the ACLU is, is looking at this just because it's not like it's everyone, it's just kids that are in something that they're not supposed to be drinking or taking drugs anyway. If you're part of the State High School League, any of the activities. So it is something that is not supposed to be done. And I think in some ways it does give kids an out from peer pressure, I really do. So, I mean, I'd like to see some more study with it. I know it, it is something I think we do have to look at. I mean, I think so many places, jobs, they do that now. But if you are part of an activity representing your high school and you're not supposed to be doing anything anyway, I think it just, it would be something to look at. So, that's my thought.
Thank you. I would recommend that we, if we want to bring this up and talk about it, we can do this in the Education Committee. We, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Art, I'm getting used to this. Member Johnston.
Well, just, just a couple of quick comments. Annie, I think your suggestions was good. I go back to the MSBA thing, we had, I think you were there, Bill, or is it called Right Choices? And that was, a lot of that was instigated because of the drug issues at their schools. There's lots of issues, I mean, lots of schools that have dealt with this. I know we're dealing with it as well too and there's a lot of other things out there that we can do, that we can learn from other, from other schools and other law enforcement and whatnot that might be more effective. Say, oops, am I still there? And one of the other concerns I have is that, again, I'm certainly not opposed to random drug testing since I'm, I'm on it, but it's, we have rules particularly on, on athletics. But my concern is that the, the kids that are having problems are probably not in athletics and probably not in a lot of extracurricular activities and how can we get to those kids? I think we're going to be missing probably the biggest problem. To, here we are debating whether or not this is a good deal, I didn't mean to go into that. I know you said we're not going to go forward, don't mean to continue on, but we do, it's lots, lots of concerns that we can certainly talk about.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Just, just a little response to that. I think that a lot of people tend to make an assumption about the, the kinds of kids that use or have chemical health issues and it certainly could easily be students who are involved in, in athletics or sports or clubs just as easily as those who are not.
Member Lothar Kemp.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add Superintendent Gronseth talked about the community conversation and I just really want to, you know, stress that is, is, I've heard a lot of, from parents, particularly in the last, over the weekend, that we do have this conversation. We do look and work with our resources in the community. And our speakers during the public comment period talked about training, particularly around mental health issues. And I think, you know, as a parent with kids that have just gone through the schools, we need more training, we need more understanding of mental health issues as part of this discussion. So, I just appreciated that comment.
Thank you. We now move on to, to, to Judy.
Thank you. I have a question, you know, looking at the offerings for the middle and high school, I, I guess one of the things I, I have two things. One is the family and consumer sciences, it's all going to be pretty much replaced by the culinary department. I, I guess I'm just, because I know, I mean, have we not had that many kids in, or students that have signed up for this? Is that very few?
Our curriculator, curriculum coordinator, curriculator, yeah, that too. Curriculum coordinator, Mr. Abrahamson.
Mr. Abrahamson, welcome. You are now a curriculator.
Yeah, I've been called many things, but never a curriculator, but I, I kind of like it. What I can tell you of the, of the history from this year of the family and consumer science. What I can tell you of the history from this year of the family and consumer science classes as opposed to the culinary classes is that at only one of our high schools did we offer any family and consumer science courses in the foods area. There wasn't a registration, excuse me, to support that. And in talking with the principals, they were stating that kids are gravitating towards the culinary, and some of those are, you know, they're two-hour classes, they lead to certifications, there's those kinds of things. They weren't really questioning the value or the importance. They were just making a statement about what kids have been interested in and over time. There's been more students gravitating towards the culinary program and fewer of them gravitating towards the facts program.
Student Representative Manning.
Yeah, just asking the Chair of the Education Committee, Harla, about the change from Music Cafe to Exploration of Music. Would that be changing the class Music Cafe to more of like a music theory course? Or how, what do you mean by that?
I think we'll have Mr. Abrahamson answer that one as a curriculator.
My understanding is, the name change is more just to reflect what the course is about. The feeling from the music department that that was a more appropriate title than the one that was currently there. That was, the only thing that changed was the course title. The description is the same.
Mr. Manning, do you have a follow-up?
Well, just speaking with the music teacher of East High School, who's been teaching Music Cafe, and there has been no interest because, like, kids don't do Music Cafe. And he said he'd be more prepared to teach more of a music theory course, and there's a lot of interest in that. Is there any way that can be changed in this somehow, or is it already?
I would think that music theory would be a part of Music Cafe, but to say it would be changed to a music theory course, no. No, not at this point. At least, that was not the recommendation from the music department.
Member Saligapunko.
So, this, I mean, I'll just follow up on that, but then I have more on the other one. So, this name was brought by the music department?
Yes.
Music committee?
Yes.
Okay. I do want to go back though to, how many students do you think were, I know our family and consumer science, it was just one hour, correct?
Correct.
Versus the two?
Yes.
Do you know how many students were in a class for that?
I do not.
Okay, because I'd be curious, because I know that there are difficulties sometimes for students to sign up for two hours versus one. They just don't have the time in their schedule.
Correct.
And so, one of my concerns is dropping something that maybe some students would like the one hour versus the two hour if they can't fit that in.
I don't disagree with you at all. This came as a recommendation from the high school principals to do this.
Does anyone know what, how many students we had in that, just in the regular family and consumer science? Because I know it's--
And it was only at one of our high schools, not both.
It was, which one was it at? East?
It would have been at Denfeld. I don't believe it was offered at East.
Okay, Denfeld had the, and they have, do they have the culinary arts too?
Yes, they do.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, okay.
Member Walty.
I didn't know I had a curriculator. I like that. I'd just like to follow up on what Member Manning said. We had a brief conversation, and the sense I had from him was that he was, the teacher, the choir teacher in East was afraid that maybe from the standpoint of salesmanship, this was not attracting students. If it is not a music theory class as such, I'm wondering if we could allow the individual school to come up in its course guide with whatever name they think will attract more students, but still maintain the description of the coursework so that it is still the same. Is that kind of flexibility between the two high schools possible on our curriculum guide?
I think it's possible. I don't think it's very practical, because you're offering a class at one site called One Thing, and you offer it at another site and call it something different, even though they are exactly the same course. That, to me, I think would be confusing overall for students when they register, because we have one registration guide. It is the registration guide for the district, for the high schools.
Member Saligapunko.
I do have a question too, and this concerns, I don't even know if it's on here, because I think this is mainly high school, but I know I've talked to you about this, Mr. Abrahamson. Just at the middle school, I mean, I think I would like to have a little bit of a discussion about the middle school curriculum, especially if we're staying with the six-period day, because I do see some things that maybe need to be changed. When we had a seven-period day at the middle school, which I loved, and I'd love to get back to that, but I'm seeing, especially our music department, really being, what's the word I want to say, reduced. And it's affecting the high schools. And, you know, my idea was, and I do have to clarify this, because, Mr. Crawford, maybe you remember this. I remember you used to be able to get a high school credit for algebra in eighth grade and a language in eighth grade, but I thought that the State Department did away with that.
Mr. Crawford, that's what we thought at one time, but as we pursued clarification from the State, they indicated that that remains an option for eighth-grade students.
And what I would, you know, honestly, I think it's very unfair, I think, for kids to have to choose between a language and a music or art class. So, one of the things that, you know, looking at, I mean, and I know I've mentioned this to many of you, but I would really like to see us start bringing languages in the elementary school, when students can learn a language much easier than when they start getting into 14, 15 years old. It's so much easier, and I think that we as a district, I think that would be one of the smarter things we could do and have not that competition between the students that are trying to do both things, and they're feeling like, oh, I have to do this, and then they lose out on that year of music, and then it's hard to come back and they have to do a fine arts credit. And I think they've lost so much. So, I'd really like to look at that. If, I mean, like I said, my first priority would be a seven-period day back in the middle schools, first priority, because that is something that I think it's so critical at that age for them to have all those different experiences. But my second choice would be to not have languages at the eighth grade, but have them in the elementaries. So, that's just my thoughts there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Walty, you pulled extended trip requests.
Yes, this would have been a better question probably for the committee, but I am curious. I see that students from Homecroft and Congen are heading off to Wolf Ridge, and I'm familiar with that, because I went up there with my children 20 years ago, wonderful time. And the students from Myers Wilkins are going on a similar expedition, this one to Hackensack, but the total trip cost is significantly less. I'm wondering if these expeditions are roughly comparable, and if not, if the difficulty of raising money might, has anything to do with the reduced cost, or maybe it's fewer students from Myers Wilkins to Hackensack.
Superintendent Granseth.
Well, whoops.
You've got to leave that button alone.
I'm sorry, I'll stop touching that button. I've had the opportunity as a teacher and a parent to visit both, both Wolf Ridge and Deportage. And they are similar experiences. One has better food than the other, I'll tell you that much. But a lot of the same activities, little bit different responsibilities as far as the adults that come along on the trip. Sometimes the adults are asked to actually teach some sessions, and at the other, the parents are more chaperones and observers. So, that could have something to do with cost. It also could be the number of students that are attending. There may be fewer students at Myers Wilkins who are opting to go on the trip. But they are both wonderful experiences for our students. And a reminder that none of these funds come out of district funding.
Okay. It's been moved by Member Harla and seconded by Member Laffler Kemp to accept the Education Committee report. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Passes seven, nothing. We now move to the Human Resources Committee report. Member Walty.
Oh, that's me. We did this figured out, yeah. Again, I'm a bit of a fraud in making this presentation. I was not at my Human Resources Committee, but I will do my best to soldier through our short meeting materials. The Human Resources Action Items for January 21st, 1914 were as follows. There were four certified appointments. There were 18 certified co-curriculars appointments. There was one certified leave, one certified permanent increase, one certified retirement, three certified temporary increases, there was four. There were four non-certified appointments, one non-certified demotion. There were 25 non-certified leaves, two non-certified permanent increases, one non-certified promotion, one non-certified recall, one, two, non-certified resignations, three, non-certified retirements, and one non-certified temporary increase. There were no other Human Resources Action Items at this time, and there were no informational items at this time. And there is no, at the present, future HR items at this time. That was our, that was the report of our meeting. Am I supposed to move?
You moved the--
I moved that we accept these minutes from the--
HR report.
HR meeting.
Second.
Second.
Second, by Member Westone. I'd like to make one correction. Mr. Walty and I both live in the past, and he did say 1914, and I'd like to make sure that it's 2014 in the record. Any other comments?
I think that was the beginning of a world war, wasn't it?
All in favor of the HR report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And that passes seven, zero. We now go to the Business Committee report. Member Laffler Kemp.
Okay. Business Committee report, Tuesday, January 21st, 2014. The first item was the financial report. The second item included bids, RFPs, and quote reports, and there was none to report there. The third item was policies and regulations, and out of that was a recommendation dealing with school board member compensation, and it's recommended that the policy be unchanged at this time. Number four, contracts, change orders, and leases. Number five, resolutions, and there were no resolutions. Number six, informational, and these items that are listed are provided for informational purposes only, and no action is required. And number seven, future items, developing and finalizing the budget considerations and legislative platform. And I move we accept the business report.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Westone. We have any discussion? Member Walty.
I pulled a couple of items. I may change my mind and not ask questions as I take a look at what I jotted down, but I'd like to pull Budget Revision C, D, E, and F. Wire transfers, investment transactions--
These are the 1C, D, E, and F?
Yes, 1C, D, E, and F.
Thank you. Any others?
I also would like to, if you could, I'd like to pull 6D, Facilities Management.
6D informational?
Yes, and 6G, Quarterly Grants and Donations.
6G. Any others? Okay, Mr. Walty, begin with 1B. Oh, I'm sorry. Member Johnston.
I'd like to have 3A1 and also item number seven.
3A1 and--
Feature items.
Yep, number seven. All right. Any others? Mr. Walty, 1C. Whoops, that's, there we go.
Let's see, is page 31, is that, oh, that's actually, we're going to, let's see, 28. No, I'm not sure that I'm going to ask this question, so I would go on to page 31, which jumps us up a little bit. That jumps us up to E. So, I'm done with C and D.
You're done with C and D, you're not talking about investment transactions.
Yes.
Member Walty.
Just to speed things up, if that helps. I'm taking a look at this, and I noticed there is a difference of about $3 million between November 30th, 2013, the ending investment balance, and last year, $11,819,000. Those are the last two figures at the end. Just a quick question, why such an increase this year in November over last year?
Mr. Hanson.
There could be several reasons to that. The one that comes to my mind first is that, as I believe Board members are familiar, the State is in the process of increasing and catching up on payment delays that we've been experiencing for a few years now. And we are getting, there has been an increase over last year that would probably get us into at least the opportunity to have more cash on hand at the end of November. The other part that I don't remember how these dates fall, but a payroll item, depending on where that falls from year to year, could be enough to change that balance by that amount in itself. So, I'd have to look at that. But it's, I guess, within the reason that I would say is not overly significant, other than it's nice to see it on a little more of a positive side from where we were a year ago.
Cash flow.
Correct.
All right. Quick question, would you, it says ending investment balance, would you define what an investment balance is?
These are, first of all, this is a report of general fund monies, okay? And these are items that we have specifically invested in either federal agency notes or certificates of deposit at banks. And so, it's the value of all of those items, and then what we present each month are the new purchases that add to that balance and any maturities that would reduce the balance, along with miscellaneous transactions such as interest rates or interest earnings and things like that.
Thank you.
We're done with E, we go on to F.
Yes, I was quite interested in one particular item on this based upon one of the things I learned at the Minnesota School Board Association Conference. Before I ask the question, would you help me out with one of the acronyms here? PUW? Would you mind if I brought something up too, Member Walty? We have new members on the Board also, maybe if we're going over acronyms, how about adding WOTM? Thanks, Harry.
Whoops, that's, no.
PUW stands for the Pupil Unit Weighting Factor, and that will change next year, but we're still under the old rules this year. WOTM is weighted average daily membership, as opposed to ADM, which is Average Daily Membership. And the weighted average daily membership, or WOTM, then uses that weighting factor, the pupil unit weighting factor, to calculate what the weighted average daily membership is. That's ultimately the, the WOTM is the number that we look at to make sure that we're on track with our revenue projections that we came up with last spring. And in a nutshell, as we work our way down this report, we get right to the bottom, and right now, based on the enrollment-- on the enrollment that we were seeing at the first of, first of the month of January, we're projecting a WOTM number of nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty pupil units versus the number that we used for our budget of nine thousand, six sixty-nine, so we're favorable by sixty-one and a half students, or sixty-one and a half WOTMs rather, that's less students than that, and, which is a good thing, but I wouldn't encourage any deviation from any budget plans that we have, because that's not enough of a difference that makes me, you know, a hundred percent confident that we're going to realize additional revenues. So we'll continue to track that. It's a number that we continue to look at, obviously, every month, and, just a short description of what this report is trying to present to you.
Member Johnston.
Sure, just again to caution the board again, that we projected a lower number, or a little bit higher than our projection was, but I think the important thing we should be looking at is the actual enrollment. We are down about fifty since the start of the year compared to last year. We're down also, last year we lost about two hundred students, the year before that was a little bit less, so I'm hoping that this is going to be a little less reduction than it was last year, but again, it's a concern that I always have, that our enrollment is slowly declining, and that's, of course, not a good sign, as I've often brought up, so, so just passing that on, so we know we got to keep watching that, of course.
Superintendent Gronseth, do you'd like to make a comment?
I just wanted to address the declining enrollment issue, and it is something that we look at very closely. We make sure that we are tracking the students who are leaving and why they're leaving, but I wanted to note also that this is a, well, nearly a statewide trend. Almost every district in the state is facing declining enrollments. That's, you know, because of generational differences, for one thing, employment for another. In Duluth, people, there just aren't as many kids in Duluth as there once was. Not that we shouldn't be doing everything that we can to keep the students that we have and to attract students from elsewhere as well.
Member Saligabunko.
Thank you, Superintendent, for clarifying that too, because I know there are a lot less students in the state than there used to be about forty years ago. I do want to address the P U W, pupil unit, because that has been, when we found out the last week of the legislature, that they had changed the percentages. The only one that went up is for all-day kindergarten, so going from point six one to one point oh, but every one of the other categories will be going down next year. It's next year, right? Yeah. So, so you look at grades one through three are going to be going down from one point one two down to one point oh. Four through six, one point zero six down to one point oh. And our high school, or seventh through twelfth grade are going to be going from one point three to one point two, which was very frustrating to me to find that out, because it is a reduction. I know they're giving, the state is putting some money in other areas, other ways they figure it out, but it would have been really nice, I have to say, for them to keep these percentages the same, because, you know, we are losing money in that category, so I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Member Walty. Yes, that is exactly the question that I was going to ask. I'm, I have a recollection, and I could be wrong, but it seems to me that when I was on the school board originally, kindergarten was point five, and, and elementary kids, first through sixth were, were one, and, and kids from seventh grade to twelfth grade were one point five. If, if I'm right, then obviously that has changed once, and now it's going to change again. If there was, you know, I think it would depend for the school district, if they had more kids at the elementary level or the high school level, how they will be affected by the change that was just outlined by Member Saligabunko. I guess the question I have is, if our population, student population does not materially change, how will that, that, this new weighting affect us? Will it affect us negatively, or is it possible it might, might actually help us a little bit?
Mr. Hanson.
The, in this case, and through these changes that were done last session with the weighting factors, in this case, they did do a separate adjustment to the formula amount itself to increase it, to offset the impact of, of the weighting change. They do that based on, you know, an overall number, so there can be, you know, slight impacts, different ways to different districts or whatever. I think the most notable change from last session relative to new revenues for us is the increase of, to fund the all-day kindergarten and raise that factor from the point six one two to a one point oh, and we've already been there for a period of a few years, so that, we will be eligible for that incremental revenue, and, will certainly help us as we look to resolve budget issues in staff buildings and lower class sizes.
It's my, well, I'd like to, we're going to go down the line, and I'll come back to you. I would like to express some optimism. Again, we're a little ahead of the curve on some of this, but, you know, talking to Academy, little Myers Wilkins and Piedmont have seen increases, we're seeing increases. Buildings are done, we're going to, with this all-day kindergarten, I think that is going to be an attraction. We lower our class sizes, we, we provide a great education. It's not necessarily doom and gloom, and I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to see this turn around. Next in line is Member Harla.
Yeah, I'm very interested, I just forgot to Member Johnston's comments. My understanding that our, our district is unique, that we host Woodland Hills within our, within our schools, would, would we ever be able to have a presentation on their programming and kind of how sometimes, how that can change our numbers back and forth too?
Superintendent Gronseth.
Well, there's Northwoods.
Okay.
Who have programming within our schools.
Okay.
And then there's Woodland Hills, but there's also eight other residential treatment areas.
Okay.
Some of it is deed to privacy that we have to watch out.
Right, but as far as the programs themselves, we could, in the future, have Mrs. Claremoth, principal of all the residentials, come in, perhaps with some of her staff, to describe those, those programs and how they benefit.
I guess mainly, like, does it, I, my understanding is that it does affect our enrollment numbers, when we look at the overall gains and losses for the year?
It does.
Does it make it look like we have lost a lot more?
Because the, the nature of our residential treatment areas are from, anywhere from six weeks to three months for students, or possibly longer, so there is a higher turnover rate in those schools. So while it may look like we've lost sixty students in, in a given month, as, you know, as many as twenty or thirty of them may be kids who are either in, being restrained at AJC, or they could be in a residential treatment center, they could be in one of our hospitals, but they all count as students who come in and out of, of the district.
Yeah, wouldn't that be interesting to see the difference in the students that are attending there versus our traditional students? I, I'm just wondering, you know, we want to be telling the true picture of what's happening within the district, and I know that this is, that that's a, that's a portion, so.
Maybe we can request a, a presentation at our ed meeting.
Yeah, just, just a thought. Thank you.
Member Johnston.
I think good point, Member Harla, and I recommend keeping an eye out. Most of these residentials, they often have fundraisers during the year. Woodland Hills has a very large fundraiser, and they talk a lot about their programs, and of course, they like to have some of those people come here as well, because they're very interesting programs, and they usually invite us, anybody that wants to come to take a tour of these, certainly just walk in there, you know, I do it pretty regularly, and great, they have really great programs, and, so, we can get that more formal.
Did I click, no, you still land, okay.
Yep, yeah, and I didn't mean to, Chairman, to say that the doom and gloom by bringing this up, that wasn't my point, but we do have to look at it, and, and our numbers are, to me, are a serious problem, and just a couple minor corrections maybe, but overall, the state students has not been, very, very little reduction. There has been reduction in rural areas. I don't consider Duluth a rural area.
No.
So, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, we do have to look at the things, and say, for example, the last twenty-five years, we literally went from the number, third school, highest school in the state, and now I, last time I looked, I think we're about twenty-two. So, again, relative to other schools in the state, we aren't doing good, and again, I'm not saying that in a doom and gloom type of thing, but just saying that, again, it's just, I think it's critical to keep the students that we got, and some of that, of course, is demographics, and Duluth, unfortunately, we don't have, we haven't grown much in population, like some of, yeah, as many of the other comparable sized schools like Mankato, Rochester, St. Cloud, et cetera. But, but again, it's something, you know, I hope that we can, it's a good thing, it's some ideas there, and working with the city, how important it is to, when we, when we have a static or declining student population, obviously means that our Duluth population declining too, and it's all connected, it worries me though, bringing that up.
I share your concerns, Member Johnston, and, and I hope you know that I do, and when I said I'm optimistic, it's no reflection of anything else, I just, I'm hoping that some of the new industries that are coming in, some of the new building areas that are coming in, and maybe we'll bring in some younger people, and we'll have an increased population. Superintendent Gronseth, you want to wrap this up?
Um.
Mr. Chairman, the meeting or the discussion on this?
Oh, I, I don't, oh, there you just, okay. Member Walty, then Superintendent Gronseth.
I just have one last question on G, if, if.
Well, I didn't, okay.
We're still working on.
We don't have to. Do you have anything you want to say about WOTM? We're done, we're now ready to G.
Yeah, I had withdrawn D, but I, see, I don't really have a question I want to ask here. I do have one very simple question, and there's probably no simple answer to it, because it involves what the state does to school districts, and in particular Duluth. I noticed on page eighty-five, the graphs, that for a period of about four years, state grants held steady at a little, about three million dollars or over, and then suddenly this year, they got stingy, and we're down to two million, seven hundred thousand for the beginning of this year. Is, is there any single explanation for why we're not getting the same level of state grants that we used to?
Okay, I'm sorry, we, we went from one F to not one G, you're talking about G in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're going to quarterly grants and donations, and who wants to answer that one? Superintendent Gronseth.
Without the backup information, I couldn't tell you specifically, but it may be the changes that happened in AmeriCor, the AmeriCor program from last year to this year. We have several less AmeriCor workers with Two North AmeriCor not receiving their local grant than we don't receive those workers, and I have a feeling that's where the big difference is.
Okay, we'll move on to three A, one. Member Johnston.
Just a very quick comment on that. We did talk about it very briefly at the committee meeting, just want to again reiterate. I'd like to have a history of, a little bit of a history of.
Compensation.
Of the compensation, and maybe some comparisons of what we got around here. Not a big deal, I'm surely not advocating that we have an increase, but I would like a little bit of history since it comes up to see where we're, where we're at, so thank you for that.
Member Hanson, you want to help us with our compensation?
I'm not going to take the bait on that one, but I will share some information. There was a report distributed on Friday with comparison to five other districts, and also a, let's see, about a, what, seventeen-year history or sixteen-year history of compensation for board members here at the district. If that doesn't meet your needs, we can come up with some additional information.
Member Laffler Kemp.
I was just going to reiterate, thank you, Susan Calerico, for sending that right away last week, and that there was a very full comparison.
Member Johnston.
No, I wasn't aware of that, so thank you, I appreciate getting that information out, and I'll certainly try to look that up, so thank you whoever did that.
We received, we received that in an email, and appreciate the work on that, and, again, it was the, it was the, I guess, the consensus of the board that we do not want an increase in this time, it's a wrong message, and we want to move on. Any other things on school board compensation? Informational six D, I think that was Mr. Johnston, Member Johnston?
That was Harry.
That was Harry?
No, that was, that was me getting ahead of myself.
All right.
So that, I don't have any questions on that anymore, and you've already handled G, so I'm very satisfied.
We are happy that you're satisfied. Any other comments on the business report?
I have seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I pulled that too. Member Johnston, again, I apologize.
Actually, yeah, I do have a, a comment on, on that D, which is on page seventy-two. I had a question on the capital construction, and, I know there's two issues on loading docks and about finding solutions, and this, that's good, but I know here, a year ago, we had a lot of discussion, I think a couple of the board members were there talking about loading dock issues on Denfeld, and I don't recall any, any resolution was that, I think the last time I talked to the staff, it wasn't there, and I'm glad to see a resolution here, and I don't know if you could tie something in it, we can certainly talk later to see if that was resolved at Denfeld as well.
Mr. Leiter, you here to comment? Should be on.
Yes, I'm not recalling the matter at Denfeld or the conversation we had there, I'm not aware of any ongoing issues or concerns with the Denfeld loading dock board members, but at Lincoln Park Middle School and at Myers Wilkins Elementary School, there are some issues relating to the height of the loading dock. The loading dock height is intended to be forty-eight inches from the ground and level at the point of wheelbase. The loading dock at Lincoln Park Middle School was shy of forty-eight inches, and yet the design indicated that it should have been, and we're working with the architects, engineers, and contractors to determine the responsible party, whether it was design error, construction error, and the resolution ultimately would not cost the district, other than the time and inconvenience to have the corrective measures implemented. Similar concerns at Myers Wilkins Elementary School, and we're involved in the same process with conversations with parties.
Thank you. Member Walty.
Yes, I do have a question about that. I just noticed that you completed two-hundred-and-nine work orders in the past month, and are currently working on six-hundred-and-sixty-nine open work orders. That's slapping them down at a pretty fast rate. Do you expect to have the rest of those finished in three months, or does that depend?
Very good question, Member Walty, members of the board, the, I think the fact is, we're going to have more work orders than we can complete, and that, and I, I think that you'll see, month after month, if you went back, that we typically have more work orders open than we complete, but we make progress, we prioritize, and, and over time, the work orders all get done, but more come in, because maintenance is an ongoing fact with buildings.
As a former activities director, I've had to ask Mr. Leiter many favors along the way, and I know that work orders come up through damage, through just general wear and tear, or some, some need, and he's always been very good about responding to the needs. Member Johnston.
Sure, this is a continuation, I haven't actually finished yet on my comments, but, but yeah, I can certainly look up, and I think that a couple of us board members were there last year, and we were going from quite a list, and one of those was the, the loading dock. I don't remember what the details were at all, but again, just I've seen the loading docks, so I think piqued my interest here, and asked that too, so maybe I'll try to look that up and see, or talk to the staff when I go out there again too, to see if that was ever addressed. One other comment on that page, I want to again thank the staff. One other comment on that page, I want to again thank the staff, is about the installing the sound attenuation in the Denfeld music room, is something that I've been aware of for a while, and, uh, the staff are very happy about the, the response, I think he actually sent in an acoustical engineer, I was told, and it was much appreciated that that, that was addressed, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, Member Waltie.
Uh, yes, just pursuing that question of work orders, I just realized, I, not being a construction-oriented, I, I had change orders in mind, related to the new construction, does, do these work orders involve some change orders, or are they all strictly ongoing regular maintenance work orders?
Um, it is nothing to do with change orders. Our building engineers, principals, staff, we've, we've got some new software that we're using in our district to build our preventative maintenance of our schools, um, some of the work orders are in the line of preventative maintenance, for example, a belt has been on a fan for two years, and it's supposed to last two years and three months, we have a scheduled maintenance to replace that belt, hopefully before it, it breaks. Others are work orders where something happens, a window gets broken, um, we generate a work order, that window may be repaired by in-house staff, or we may contract for that repair, but that generates a work order. So, the, anything related to our buildings, typically for repair and maintenance is put into this work order system, it typically does not include capital improvement, which would be if somebody wants a new sink added into a room where one didn't exist before, that would not be, a work order would typically be a capital improvement project, which would be in our ten-year maintenance and repair capital improvement plan.
Member Slayapunko.
Oh, I think, uh, Member Laffler Kemp was ahead, so go ahead.
I'm going by order.
Sir, this is just...
All right, well, Member Laffler Kemp?
Okay, real quick, uh, when I was looking at this page, I, I had wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Leiter, if, if you could pass on to the custodial and the engineer staff, uh, the excellent work they did in snow shoveling, uh, in December, I went out to a number of holiday concerts, and just really appreciated, um, the work that they did in, in this heavy snow we had, so if you could just pass that on.
Thank you. Member Slayapunko.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Leiter, on, under capital construction, under the status report, um, it said something about, um, the purchased chairs in the commons area at Denfeld, um, just the seat cracking, and I think, aren't they the same at both high schools, so you're not seeing the problem at East too, or, I, I'm just curious?
Um, members Slayapunko, members of the board, I, I'm not certain that they are exactly the same, but I believe it is Denfeld, I don't, uh, have not heard that we have had similar cracking of chairs at East High School. They look similar, but they may be different, slightly different, so, and the resolution of that, I have not heard at this time.
Mr. Trimble, do you have any knowledge for us about seat cracking at Denfeld?
Um, the, for, for the most part, I guess, some, some of the seats may be a little bit faulty, but all the seats I've sat in have been fine, I guess.
We'll look into that, thank you. Member Johnston, future items?
Sure, we talked about the legislative agenda, I want to mention if we could, I think it's important here, hope you allow me to, Mr. Chair, real brief discussion on the retirement fund, we talked about that in MSBA quite a lot, we talked about it on the retirement committee, even though it wasn't really on our agenda, but kind of fit in with this legislative platform, and one of the issues, I kind of wanted to pass on, I think we are getting a little bit closer to having a, a consensus on this, I'd like to think, but we had a fairly robust discussion down at MSBA, and, and as, as well as Chairman Murneke and myself, but it's, I think that, uh, one things I want to pass on is from Bob Lowell, who's an MSBA guy, he probably, I think summed it up, the, the, the session we had probably best, and he kind of said he's not sure what's going to happen, it's pretty unpredictable, and when somebody with his background, working with the legislature, says that, it's certainly something we got to keep an eye on, and this one, kind of a, you know, this kind of a scary statistic, uh, you know, I think we had a presentation by Jay Spassell, um, who, who had that, and he indicated, and I'm hoping I got this wrong, but he indicated, in the one slide, that we're looking at twelve million dollar annual assistance for the next twenty-four years, and maybe that was including St. Paul as well, I don't remember, but it was a, quite a large number, so again, and that's when Bob Lowell had the reaction there, that we've got to keep a good eye, again, nothing we can do, this is not anything to do with us as a school board, and again, reiterating again, that this is policies that are basically been set up by the legislature, not as us, but, uh, it was kind of benefits, one of our discussions, people, some other school districts said, well, gee, we paid all kinds of money, and it's like, well, you should too, well, obviously, we don't want to do that, and again, so just, again, thank you, I think we're going to have a more discussion on that, on legislative agenda, so we'll probably, anyway, keep it on the, keep it on the burger, and keep a good eye on it, as well as on our, our lobbyists, because it's, hopefully, the chance is very small of it happening, but the impact could be large, if it, if it, if it by chance could, so that's all I wanted to say on that.
I agree with Mr. Johnson, that was one that, we had a couple of different reports, and, uh, you know, that, that's one that, right now, it looks good, we, but, but we absolutely have to keep an eye on it, uh, we have a friendly, a friendlier, uh, state, uh, state legislature and administration right now, but, you know, anything can change, so we will, we will keep an eye on that. Member Waltie?
And on that same topic, I, I have to admit, the most surprising thing that I encountered when I went to the Minnesota State School Board Association Conference, something I went to great many times, ten years ago, was that their, the School Board Association's legislative lobbying, uh, said that was going to lobby the legislature to either have the state take care of this, or, or give the Duluth School District School Board the power to levy this rather significant annual sum, and I trust that won't happen, but it certainly did give me shivers to hear that that's what my organization was going to lobby for.
Absolutely, and again, we'll, we'll, we'll watch, we'll watch. Special resolutions, or, Harry, are you, do you have a special resolution, or are you done? You're done? You're not done?
We have to vote on the whole.
Oh, we have to vote on the, I'm sorry, that's my, my problem. Business committee report, it was moved by Member Laffler Kemp and seconded by...
Member Westholm.
Member Westholm, to approve the business committee report. Member Johnston?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a statement here.
Sure.
As most of you know, and all of you, and some of your new members, probably don't know, but I have voted no on the business committee report for probably about two and a half years now, uh, for, I think, good reason.
Yes.
Uh, but I'm going to say, I'm going to vote yes, this time. Uh, and one reason is, is that we, we don't have any change orders in it, that I still have lots of questions, which I'm continuing to ask the staff, and hoping to get answered, but I just, not breaking that, I'm voting yes, but I just want to make it clear to the board, particularly the new members, that this is a very unusual time for me to vote yes on this, and that's all I have to say.
I appreciate that, and I've, Mr. Leiter knows, that I've, I think I've threatened his life if, if his first change orders go. This fall, Superintendent and I, and other members, were able to go see the open houses at Myers Wilkins and at Condon, and I was talking to the mayor, and I said, I, I think now the buildings are done, and we're hoping now that, uh, we'll start attracting the students we need and, and turn the corner, and, uh, I'm still optimistic about two thousand fourteen. With that, we'll vote on the business committee report, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, it passes seven, nothing. Special resolutions, there are none. Questions, at this point, I'd like to ask any of the members if they want to make any comments about the MSBA workshop. Member Harla?
I was actually going to comment on something else, but you...
Oh, okay.
I just, I wanted to make a comment that I attended the Martin Luther King Junior Day rally and, and walk yesterday, and actually Friday night, attended the, um, at East High School, they hosted a, a citywide talent show with students, it was really see, neat to see student-led, um, student-led, led events there, but I really loved to see our students yesterday, standing alongside our community, I saw specifically some East teachers brought some of their students alongside them, and I know there were kids from all across the district, so just really want to commend the people that put that event together, that really celebrated community building, and, um, the speakers that they had were phenomenal, so just very thankful for that, that we have that in our community.
Yeah, let me, then, do any of the members want to make any comments, not necessarily about the, uh, MSBA. Member Johnston?
Yeah, I actually had a couple of comments, but I'll start with MSBA, and then we can go on to other people, and then I'll go back to another comment. Uh, one of, uh, that was good, has been, I guess, my, is it my fifth MSBA leadership conference, and I always learn a lot, I'm going to say a couple negative things about, but then I want to say some positive things, so don't get worried, uh, it's, the negative things are, is kind of follow-up, what you just said, uh, I believe that maybe at my highest count, I may be seeing two members of the community of color there, which has certainly concerned me, I didn't see that, I mean, I didn't, I didn't see a lot of acknowledgement of that there, and, I mean, we can't do anything about other than express a concern, uh, there currently isn't a lot of community of color on our school boards, and, um, that, that does concern me, nor is there in our MSBA staff, or really from MDE as well, just taking, just an observation, which, which concerns me. Uh, another concern I got, this is maybe a little bit of an odd concern, but I'm going to express it, I got way too many sessions on lawyers, I'm prone by lawyers, and, uh, like, I want to hear education, and how to reduce the achievement gap, I don't really want to hear about lawyers, and of course, I mean, I don't want to hear lawyers' opinions on how we should do it, that's our job, although that, with, obviously, they, they have a reason to be there, but I thought they're a little bit overrepresented in the presentations. Now on to the good things I did want to say, a couple of things, was the first one we got to was Wednesday night, was about the building of board everybody trusts, one of the comments I picked out on that was, was that we have to have a actual, a board, not a uniform board, but a unified board, and I thought that was very well put by the presenter, a lot of other good little sound bites like that, but I think it's important that we, as a board, have to look at, as that we're not uniform, but if we can be unified once in a while, I think that's much more important. Uh, another comment, I, or, I thought interesting thing, I mentioned this really briefly, was the, uh, session by the right choice, alternative to suspension, and one of the things that the presenter said is that this is to break, to break the pipeline to prison, we talked a lot about that, once we suspend kids or expel kids, how can we, how can we keep them somehow members of our society and not going right that pipeline of prison, and that's a real big issue, of course, everywhere, and it was interesting to see their, their, the, what they'd done right, right as a county, and the right alternative, it was kind of a play on words, but I think went very well with the presentation, I was impressed with the presentation. Another one was, uh, was by the, uh, Megan Olivia Hall, was a Minnesota Teacher of the Year, that was character, education, closing, and bridging the achievement gap, and it was, was, it was an interesting perspective, one of that was, is that she was worried about the emphasis on just math and reading, of course, she didn't say math and reading isn't important, but she said, uh, we have to sort of emphasize integrity, perseverance, responsibility, collaboration, and stewardship in our students, as well as just, just math and reading and the traditional academics, and, and kind of her thing was, is this character building is very successful for students, sometimes that's a better measure of success sometimes than, than math and reading, and it's, it's certainly a different perspective, but I thought was, was very well, well-taken. Uh, one other thing I did, there was a roundtable, I'll do this real quick, but it was by Greg Abbott, who's the, uh, one of the, one of the real great guys down at MSBA, and it was, I'll say, it was what boards really need to know about meeting procedures, I'm going to read a couple of them, and I think that we've done quite well, and, but I want to just reiterate this, I think some of us went to, and, and I'll just, roll the chairs into ramrod meetings as quick as, and, as, as to quicken, as to quicken and end as possible, and the, the chair should act as a board servant, and this is the servant, Greg capitalized, if not me, the chair ensures everybody has equal access to all information, all have equal rights, minority has full opportunity to speak, all members follow the group's rules, and the meeting is run efficiently, and, and again, I'm just commenting that I'm hoping that we can, we can continue doing that, and, uh, so, um, you know, again, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll be, be quiet, and hear what other people's comments are, and again, the meeting was very good.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Sure, um, a couple of things, I, as a new, uh, school board member, I too greatly appreciated, um, both, both going to the new member training, but also going together with our board to the, uh, leadership conference by the school board, and got a lot out of the training, and, um, uh, got a lot out of the building a, a positive board, particularly the protocols of a board member, and the ethics of a, a school board member, and, uh, so lots of good things, since I appreciate, uh, having that opportunity. Um, I had a chance to talk with many other board members from around the state, and I want to thank again our financial staff and our, and our other staff, I, I came away feeling really positive about the kind of information I'm, I've been already getting, uh, as a, a school board candidate, and now a, a school board member from our staff, and so I, uh, thank you for that, and it was really reinforced, um, by being at the training. Uh, and then lastly, I, I just wanted to also comment on the Martin Luther King event, so Annie and I both attended Friday night at Duluth East, and really appreciated, there were a lot of staff, um, from Duluth East, a lot of students that participated, as well as over fifty kids across the city that sang and danced, and, uh, learned about Nelson Mandela, as well as Martin Luther King, and, um, I was really proud of, uh, the school district for being a sponsor of that event, and many other events over the weekend, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Member Waltie, I, I hope we have not driven our new student representatives into total catatonia as a result of our long meeting, I think it was an excellent meeting, I've enjoyed it a great deal, and, and I still feel the same way about, uh, these board meetings, as I, I did the very first one when I was, was seated, after ten years. Uh, that feeling was reinforced when I went to the Minnesota School Board Association Conference, and every single fellow member of my school board went along with me, that was a huge sea change from, uh, the number of people who attended when I was on the school board, eighteen and ten, to ten years ago. Thank you all, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to the next meeting. Thank you. Member Johnston?
Sure, just to, just to follow up on some of the speakers, you know, again, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of people here, and there are concerns that I haven't really heard from any official source at all before, I'm surprised that we haven't heard more of this as a board, and I guess I would certainly ask the superintendent, uh, let's talk about it next time, uh, you know, next time we have our, our education committee meeting, that's some of the concerns that were brought up, uh, kind of concern me about the training, the lack of training, and that kind of stuff, and don't want to have a discussion now unless somebody wants, but I'd certainly like to, uh, talk about it certainly next month, for sure, uh, if someone wants to talk about it now, hey, that's fine, but it wasn't my intent to bring it up, but just to pursue it in the future.
Superintendent Gronseth?
I just wanted to note that it would probably fit better into the, um, business or the HR agenda than the education, um, committee, because it was a budgetary consideration that was done last spring, so between HR and business, it would fit into those better.
Sure, no, wherever you want to put it, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, I'll wrap this up, um, the MSBA conference, the, the negative side, just what Member Johnson said, is I, I went to way too many, um, meetings with attorneys, one was on bullying, I won't go through it, it scared the heck out of me, and then I went to hot topics in law, school law, dealing with, part of it was facilities, Mr. Leiter, about how we're legally responsible for so many things, and I came out of the... for so many things. And I came out of there with my head spinning. Positive thing, I really enjoyed our lunch together, as, as Rosie said. And I did enjoy a lot of very positive information that I, I think will help us as a board. And with that, we are adjourned.